The final okay from your standpoint that stormwater is also.
Yeah.
Okay, and so we meet November fourteenth, fifteenth, and then conservation is the sixteenth.
Correct.
On the DPW side, as you may recall, we sent the sewer system design to a peer review. Wooded and Curran is doing that for the DPW. They've received all the material they need, however, they've not completed their review. They have committed, they will get it to us as soon as possible, and certainly by the next hearing. I would trust that even if there are some open items on that, that we would likely be able to condition those in a decision.
Okay.
I have reached out to McMiller, the airport manager, just to confirm. Again, you may recall back at town meeting time, we talked about two filings would be required, one with the FAA and one with the state. He confirmed that is still the case. He does have a copy of this layout and material plan. He will review it and let us know if he has any comments, but he did remember the project, and he didn't have any comment or concern when we spoke.
Okay.
Now, the tech, the civil review, that I feel is complete, however, there's several items that I just want to bring to your attention, and essentially, they're being deferred to the board because they're not necessarily required according to the BILOC compliance, however, they're recommended by the civil, the civil peer review. So, there are several, but I think for the most part, we can go through them fairly quickly. It's somewhat easily understood, so. You have the memo, and we have circled the ones that we'd like to defer to you tonight. And we can zoom in, some of them will need at least a little bit of visual to explain where they are. So, the first one is related to the A&R plan. The applicants acknowledge there will need to be an A&R plan conditioned, that line is not set in stone at this time, however, once that is put in stone, zoning compliance for each parcel will be on that plan, we'll make sure that they meet each side in terms of fire, light coverage, and all the-
I think that's fine.
And dimensions, yeah. Number two is regarding the parking reduction permit. Both the commercial and residential applied for the parking waiver. It may not necessarily be needed on both, right now, it looks, it's certainly needed for the residential side, and the justification was all discussed here, it was discussed, it was submitted with the application in terms of shared parking. So, when we get to the detail, I think it may be best to actually issue one for both sides, just to cover it, but right now, the numbers show that they do meet the commercial side.
And can we make that condition acceptable?
Across sharing easement on the parking, because I think that was the justification that the residential would be using, because then A&R is going to come in after the fact, so if we don't have an easement condition-
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. I mean, from our perspective, it's really one parcel, there may be two ownerships, but it has to function as one.
Right.
There'll be separate decisions for financing reasons and that.
Right.
Yeah.
But there has to be some sort of agreement to share the parking, yeah.
There's a comment related to cross easements for a number of things, common area maintenance.
There'll be extensive cross easements between the two parcels.
Yeah.
So, number four, the entrance and exit, a lot of them essentially will need to be conditioned, and they're conditioned upon Mass DOT's approval. So, there's several to that effect, and this one is one of them, so the entrance and exit driveways will not be finalized until MassDOT's review.
Can you sentence that type over to number five?
No, so those are the remaining.
It's number three.
Right, so they dropped off in previous reviews, that comment had been addressed and resolved. So, at number six, this speaks to the A&R comment that I just had, eventually, there will be an A&R, and zoning compliance will have to be vetted on both lots. Number seven, the applicants acknowledged that they'd asked the board to condition any grant for the height waiver, require final average grades and building heights to be certified by a project surveyor prior to occupancy. And Tech just acknowledges that that is a condition they think the board should apply. Number eight is all set, it has been addressed. Number nine, lighting facilities. So, this comment is that the plan has been revised, the plan that we still have has not been revised, but again, I think we can condition and update a photometric plan that meets IES standard, we would require a certified letter at the end saying that it does in fact meet IES standard.
Yeah, I think the prior comment was just that there was one area that was, that was showing some light spillover, I think it was just a glitch, and that we just need to wrap back around, Chris Huntress, have him update that and provide the final photometric that shows that.
There's some spillover, I mean, interior, there's a lot of zeros, it's just, it's actual variables, but I think it's a simple thing, like, in condition. At least what I looked at today. So, thirteen, fifteen, and now we saw seventeen, we saw eighteen. So, this speaks to warning signage for pedestrian, and again, we'll come up with a little bit later. Can you go to this location? So, there's a mid-left crossings, and at the roundabout itself, that they're recommending signage be added. Joe, again, a previous comment was it's been added, and it has been to several areas, but I don't see it added around the roundabout.
Yeah, the warning signs are that there's pedestrians ahead, and we feel that that's totally appropriate on the, the beginning of the drive off of Osgood, prior, you know, whatever, several, several yards from the actual crosswalk, that there's going to be a crosswalk, and then there's a crosswalk sign when you get to the crosswalk. But the other interior spaces seem that, I mean, that's not appropriate, because they'd be obscured by the parking, we'll obviously have one of the bright ones right at the crosswalk, but it's more, I guess we can, we can work through the details with TEC, and we're not gonna, we're not gonna get into an argument over one sign, you know, we'll add the signs wherever TEC feels they're confident.
We're resilient signs to get people to do what they should not do anyway. I mean, I, I think like, for example, Mass out before we hit the Rotary Field Center is so ridiculous almost to be, you know, crazed.
The one-way signs around it. I agree, we can make a general condition that the signs prior to CO will be reviewed with the planning department and make sure that they're appropriate.
How are you distinguishing the crosswalks? Are you putting pavers in, are you just putting lines in, how are you?
Right now, we're proposing striping.
Just striping, okay.
We may, in the end, in that center one, the spine, we may do some special treatment there, as far as, as far as that's concerned, but that's going to be as the commercial gets tenants signed up, and, and, you know, that kind of final detail evolves. But right now, we'd like it approved or permitted with, with conventional painted crosswalks there, or at all locations.
The only thing I've found is if you paint it the opposite color, or if you line your parking lots white, and you repaint them yellow, or vice versa, they stand out more for a crosswalk, they're more distinguishable, the opposite from what the parking lot lines are.
Okay, so, number nineteen is recommending a sidewalk connection from the north, northwest of the residential building to the commercial area. Joe, I think you spoke to this at an earlier meeting.
Yeah, we have, have one from, from building C to, up to the commercial area.
The comment specifically is for building E and D to connect to both E up to the sidewalk over here, and then from D over from here to the roundabout to get to the commercial side, or so that's how Eric-
Okay.
From TEC had described it, that it would be from building D over to this crosswalk over here, or the crossing, so that they can get to the commercial side, and then from E, up from this side of the building, up to the sidewalk over here, so that they can also get to the commercial building.
Okay. Yeah, that's not a problem.
So, would add another crosswalk and-
Yeah.
Yeah, because the sidewalk's connecting all the buildings, inclusive of the leasing center interior to themselves.
So, just to get those buildings to the interior, that was the comment. Okay, so again, I foresee adding these as conditions, just because the plans are so far along, Joe is going to make updates to the plan, I trust they'll be on there, but the belt and suspender will be, it's at least conditioned in case things don't make it to the plans. So, number twenty, again, ties in the Mass DOT review. Sidewalks, crossing, crosswalks, it will all be included, as far as along the front of the property, will be included in the Mass DOT package, and we will have a general condition regarding the access permit, as well as the non-vehicular permit, which is the streetlight, that will encompass most of these conditions. Is everybody okay with moving to twenty-four? Okay, so twenty-four speaks to underground utilities like gas, electric, telephone, cable-type utilities, they are not shown on the plan. The applicants are recommending that we condition that, they're not really material to the tech review itself, but should they need to be brought back to the board, they can bring them back to the board if there's transformer pad or anything related like that to this, but they're really just, you know, the cable lines, that kind of things. Water, sewer is all part of the plans.
Yeah.
Okay, and number twenty-six, the distance to the property lies to the nearest corner of each building. There was one small setback that I think was left from a previous rendition of the plan that just hasn't been taken off, Joe, Rebecca's bringing it up now. So, that, see that twenty-three foot, which shows, at one point, the comment was, you may need a size setback variance, it shows as twenty-five feet to the bottom corner, it just needs to come off the plan.
Or just be stretched out to the twenty-five, or twenty-six.
Yeah, there's that one, and then there's the one over here, because there's twenty-five, that he said should be more so around approximately twenty-seven or so.
Okay.
We just certainly don't want to show it as requiring a variance.
No, no, we're not shaking that.
So, thirty-one speaks to the dumpster locations, again, Tech's concern is the dumpster at the far north of the property is fairly close to the site entrance, they commented that maybe the board would want that relocated, but it's really hidden behind a retaining wall, so it is masked from the traffic coming and going from the site.
Is the board operating on the dumpster location?
That's usually part of their purview.
Yeah, there are requirements in terms of screening and setbacks, and they have seen these plans, they've submitted comments that they will work through permitting as it gets further, but they didn't have any objection to the locations as shown.
I think that one's just the commercial dumpsters.
Right. So, everybody okay with the location there? That's fine, right, so we don't need to condition that. All right, so thirty-three, we have referenced this a little bit earlier in the hearing process, but around the roundabout, there is parking. Tech had asked for it to be moved a little bit further away from the roundabout, which it has, so if you see the, when you, I'm going off the rotary into the main street, do you see the parking spaces at four? I forget what that used to be, but I think it was seven, and some of the landscape changes in that has moved that further away, but that's probably the closest point, parking to the roundabout coming off of it. The other point of concern was the parking spaces for the-
Leasing center.
Leasing center. So, what Tech has proposed, because they're in the main, they'll be backing into this area to pull out and turning in, Tech has proposed they'll sign those appropriately as future or potential residents, they're rarely for the leasing center, they're not for the commercial or residential parking, and they'd be signed that way, but, but they'd like to maintain spots.
Sign, right.
Sign them, and, and certainly not remove them, given they need dedicated spots for that business.
Employees won't park there, and then they'll be signed, and Princeton does this at all their properties, so there'll be signs that will say, "Future resident of Princeton and North Andover," and there'll be a sign for each of those spaces in front of each of those spaces, so it's clearly marked that that's what they're reserved for. And it's merely, we want to be able to have a convenient place for those potential new residents to easily find the leasing center, and to go in and, and be introduced to the site, and not be wandering around trying to find where they're supposed to go.
And they move those further along the roundabout as well to try not to impede the flow.
So, we do not need to, not condition that. Condition the signage, though. Okay. So, on thirty-eight, it speaks to the radius of the curbing turning in is wider than some of the internal turns. Again, Joe, you can speak to this, but the comment was that the turning analysis has been completed and presented in exhibit, I myself haven't seen that, but Tech has said that they haven't received it.
I think it was a, there was just a misunderstanding, we had done it, this, the fire truck turning template, this is a forty-foot straight ladder truck, it's probably the most difficult truck to move around a site, a tractor-trailer is actually easier, because it articulates. The standard, we had thought that this was sufficient, in that if we can get the forty-foot truck around, then we could get what's known as an SU-30, which is your classic trash truck, and, and also the, the sixty-foot tractor-trailer to the commercial space, again, because the forty is the, is usually the worst-case scenario. But, there was a misunderstanding, we can certainly have the AI do both of those additional vehicles and demonstrate that, you know, we don't have any conflicts or issues with, with that.
Okay, thirty-nine and forty are fine, fifty-four is fine, fifty-five, so there's a structure in front of building E, I have a question on this, did Tech, explain that?
Yep, so, in front of building E, there is a bold line right here, that if you look at the key, depicts a retaining wall, but it's not labeled as such, although they believe it should be.
So, that, see the cursor?
Right, where the cursor is in front of fourteen, so not the first line, but the one behind it, they believe is supposed to be a retaining wall according to the key, and is not appropriately labeled.
I think that's retaining wall, I think it's the back of the sidewalk. In any event, we can certainly clarify that.
It does look darker than the other side of the sidewalk.
Yeah, looks like it's the back of the sidewalk.
Yeah, it does look a little bolder.
Yeah, okay. So, fifty-seven, the applicants should consider heavy-duty pavement sections for the entrances, main access drives, and loading areas, and, I mean, Tech's response is, that's a life cycle cost financial decision, Tech recommends it, but, again, it's not an issue with BILOC as much as just overall maintenance and appearance of the site.
And what we would like is for it to be approved, you know, with, with standard duty pavement, and then, obviously, I don't think this board or anyone in town would have a problem with an upgrade to provide heavy-duty pavement in some areas, we don't disagree with, with TEC that it's a recommendation, but it's a, it's an overall project cost issue that needs to be vetted out. The site is very expensive with regards to some of the, some of the things, and there just may be that decision made by either party, that's more appro, it's more germane to the commercial side, where you're going to get more truck traffic back and forth, we'll have move-in vans that'll come back to the residential side, but regardless, we see it as a financial issue, and not, not necessarily something that should be before the board.
One thing is the intersection, the first say twenty-five feet off of Osgood where the lights are, I mean, that is an impact to the rest of the residents if you have to pave it every five years and shut down one lane off of 125.
I think DOT will probably require that.
Okay.
Their pavement, their pavement standards are different than a private site's.
Yeah, I was going to say that, I mean, internally, I'm, you know, I agree, it's a, that's a developer's choice, but, you know, the two entrances where the, you can't pave without going into 125 because of the nature of it, I think they should be heavy-duty.
Yeah, we certainly, to the degree that that's redundant to DOT, we'd certainly welcome a condition of the planning board for, for the aprons there to be done.
Yeah, so, dumb question, what's the difference?
It's just the way, it's, there's a lot of different surfaces, how much the load is, the, the density of it, everything like that, but, yeah.
It's, can be as much as a few inches of pavement, and over a large area can start-
Oh, definitely.
So, that's a differentiation, it's thicker.
Yeah.
You're saying DOT might get involved in that any way.
At the aprons, yes, at the entrance.
They might, however, you're okay if we condition it, should they not include it?
Yes, for, for, maybe to the, to the tangency point of the, of the rounding.
Yeah, okay, you know, just in, in far enough that, you know, because reasonably, you know, you have to go out past the edge to contact everything like that, so.
All right, number fifty-eight speaks to grading-
Plus, you don't want to pay for those police details anyways in the future to do that work over again.
Probably more expensive than the pay.
Exactly, yeah.
So, fifty-eight is about ADA grading and slope at two percent, some spot grades look to be at five percent, I think an overall condition that this grading is going to have to comply with ADA standards.
Yes, we will, we will comply with ADA, we've had issues when we haven't done that, and it's very costly to fix it after the fact.
That is a big part of the connectivity discussion, so it has to comply. Okay, so, fifty-nine, sixty, and sixty-one, again, are all kind of tied to the MassDOT approval, and a general condition to that effect will be in the decision. Sixty-two. Okay, so, this is-
On the MassDOT, when would you expect to have some sort of answer from the ballpark?
Well, we've had a preliminary meeting with them, and once we have all our permits from this board and conservation, we would spin Vanessa Associates up to do the permitting with DOT, and that is, goes through twenty-five percent submittal, twenty-five percent complete plans for all the work out in 125, that gets submitted, public comment, and then there's a seventy-five percent submittal, and then there's a hundred percent submittal, before they'll issue the permit to actually physically do the work, and that process itself takes several months.
Okay.
Comment number sixty-two is in regards to the stairwell, there are stairs that are located on the, on the side, right here, sorry, there are stairs there and a sidewalk, but there is no handicap accessible ramp, and TEC is recommending that they abide by ADA standards at that location, and the applicant is saying that they have provided ADA considerations in other locations, and do not need to provide it at this location.
Can you show us where that is?
Yeah, it's right here where the cursor is, those stairwells, right, the stairs right there, those, those lines, that's a staircase right there, right here.
Why are they calling it adjacent to building one?
Yeah, I don't get it.
Yeah, it says to building one, but that's-
It does, but it means that it's adjacent to the other side of the site.
So, on the other side is building one?
Yes, because building one is over here, and they were asking about this particular location.
I don't get it.
So, there's a sidewalk that runs that side of the-
So, this is the paved sidewalk, and these are the stairs, so forget building one.
Okay.
So, he's talking about these three lines, and this sidewalk right here, and the fact that a handicap, or wheelchair, would not be able to get from this sidewalk to this sidewalk because of the stairs.
Do you have to have handicap accessibility at each sidewalk, or is it enough to have it at certain ones?
And that's why they say future ADA considerations may be required.
Oh, you're planning ahead.
It's very complicated, and we, essentially, what we can't do is provide a route from one amenity to another amenity for the capable person, where we do not provide similar access to the handicap person.
So, you have to do it.
So, we'll, we'll have to look into it. What we normally do as we develop construction documents is we engage an ADA compliance specialist to answer some of these tough questions, like this, and, you know, the, anywhere else on the site, that might, might come up. We don't have to provide it everywhere, that's, that is one thing that we, we have found.
If the way the law is revolved, then you don't know what next year is going to bring.
Yeah, because it can be said that we do provide an access point, you'd have to circle around the building following the route of sidewalks, so there is no parking there, so questionable access availability.
You use that sidewalk-
That's the point, you know, that's the point.
But that's probably not the question with the ADA, right? I was not, but I was saying, why is there even a sidewalk on that side?
Because there's a sidewalk that runs along the whole front of the property, and if somebody's walking down that, it's, they could enter that entrance.
But sometimes we-
But there's no sidewalk before, and there's no sidewalk after, and the pedestrian crosswalk is down the street further.
Sometimes we'll actually eliminate sidewalks, because we're not providing equal access, and we'll look at a condition like that and say, well, we really can't provide ADA, we have to provide ADA, ADA equivalent access if we provide the access, and we'll remove sidewalks, if they just don't make sense in the first place to go through that extra expense.
So, then, so it'll be an overall condition that they have to meet ADA, so, etc., so, that's the job.
So, the landscape plan, again, in this final set that we have, it's not an updated landscape plan, as far as we can tell, so we would just condition that in the end, we need to make sure that we're in line with the, the plan that we saw here independently with Chris Huntress, that it, it ties into the overall plan set.
I'd rather get it submitted than condition that, I mean, at some point, that seems to be-
Certainly, with, I think, I think now that we've finalized, we're, we're very close to finalizing the drainage, we could take that final site plan, turn it over to Chris, and have him do one last, and get that to you before that.
Okay.
I think that would be better.
And have him update the photometric plan as well.
By the way, while we're at it, it's, and we may have addressed, have we addressed signage completely?
We've discussed it, so, our thought on signage is, there'll be a condition that at some point in the future, a conceptual signage plan would need to come to the board for review, the overall signage would need to comply with zoning, so there'd be two conditions, we have not, other than the residential side, they have a pretty good feel what that would look like, but on the commercial end, I don't think they've progressed very far. So, there'd be a condition that at some point, it wouldn't be a parent hearing or anything, just come before the board to show conceptual plan.
Over on landscape, any second, the island on the exit only entrance, is that just a bermed island, or is it just say hatched markings for them, the triangle?
That's, that's firm, physically obstructed.
Okay, and then what's on the interior of it?
Which one are you on there?
The triangle on the, on the entrance exit only?
It may just be concrete.
Okay. And Mass, DOT, you-
Again, that's DOT, you're going to weigh in on that whole area.
All right, 64, if I had a provo, proposed limit of work line, again, its comment is that it's on the revised plan. I don't see the limit of work other than.
The, the, yeah, the, the comment was, was in relation to the landscape plan, that we had shown the limit of work based on our grading, but the landscaping went outside that, so I think the original comment was to coordinate the landscape plan to make sure that we're capturing all of the proposed landscaping within the limit of work. That's been further identified on the notice of intent plan, so the next round it will be on.
Okay, but would it show on the grading plan, the overall limit of work?
Yes.
On the grading? Okay. So again, if you can zoom in near the bank building, so the applicant should provide crosswalk pavement markings for the proposed accessible parking stalls to the wheelchair ramp at building one. So again, if you look at the cursor, there's handicap parking spaces, this building one is intended to be a bank and there's not a crosswalk to the handicap ramp, which is just underneath that arrow, that one-way arrow.
Wait there.
Okay?
Okay.
Interesting.
If they can help us to sell, they can get done faster, it's good to take a march through this stuff.
Yeah, I mean, quantity was a lot, but they're not insurmountable and I just didn't want to go back through a response and, and more peer review. I think we can handle it just administratively through either conditions or revised plans.
On the 15th, we'll wrap up the final stormwater.
I hope so.
Photometric and landscape plans.
Yeah, DPW response.
DPW response.
Yep, they're going to submit the final landscape and photometric. Most of the other things will do both, will condition and hopefully you do get them in time for.
Then the following evening will be our first night for Conservation Commission and then come back that last.
So the December 6th is our next hearing. You have signed the extended time through the end of November, so I'll get those to John Smolak and just ask, we get 14 days beyond that date?
That's fine.
In order to file a decision, but, yeah, so if everything continues to progress.
We'll have to hear, will be at town hall, right?
We will be at town hall.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Not tonight, it's a town hall.
I texted Jean.
Yeah.
I said, are we at town hall? We discussed this last night.
We did.
No, it's a long time ago.
Yeah, it was a long time ago, I agree, it was three weeks ago, actually.
And it's open, and it's open, so. I just.
What's that?
They just like.
No, they usually meet on Monday, that's why it was cranking, yeah.
Halloween? It was Halloween, they must have moved it.
Yeah, they must have moved it, yeah, yeah, can I?
No, because I'm like, is that always be there?
Yeah.
Okay, we will hand out this package now. So all of those are just put to the side, these will be documents associated with the year of. 575 Osgood Street, which is the Edgewood property. Yes, I get it to Laura early.
Great. You can do this.
I can do this, I can do it. I'm getting better.
There's a couple of minor discussion items tonight and then we have drafted three decisions. This project requires a modification to a site plan review permit, a modification to a CCRC permit and a watershed special permit, so the three separate documents. Before we get to that, there's only one comment in the tech response that was actually discussed at the last meeting, but you didn't decide, you didn't indicate whether you wanted to condition it or not. So at the entranceway, tech has recommended a painted stop sign, stop line and stop sign. Rebecca's bringing that up right now. Melissa, if you could point to it.
Right.
So there will be signage there, pedestrian crossing, but they're actually recommending a painted stop line and stop sign. That doesn't exist, I don't think, anywhere on the campus.
Correct, it isn't anywhere.
Yeah, but.
Who was recommending?
The civil engineer. So again, it's just as long as you guys do not think so.
Yeah, I don't think there's going to be that much pedestrian crossing to just advise.
Nope, it is the access.
Where wild striping?
I'm sorry?
Where, where, where's wild, where's, you brought up the crossing?
There is a cross, that, there is a cross one.
There's a crosswalk.
Yeah, and that, again, just to remind you, some of the Half Mile Hill parking and Joyce's Trail parking is on this side, so some of the, the walking to trail access will be across that way too. Okay, so that one's easy. I did want to cover the easement for, we talked last time about vacating a certain portion of the easement, relocating the easement, but again, if you recall back.
This is the easement over the existing property because there is no easement over the, the new property yet, right?
Right. I just mean access driveway to the property, so from Osgood Street up.
Oh, okay.
We're, we're vacating a certain section and relocating.
Oh, this was the thing that Paul Headstrom talked about the last meeting, yeah, okay.
So what we are going to do is include also in that drafted easement, the existing Edgewood parcel has a CR on that large portion up to the top of the plan. That existing CR did not have a clause in it that allowed public access over the trails. I don't know why, I discovered it around town meeting time, that it just maybe was an oversight. What we're proposing to do is use the easement language for the vacating to actually put the clause in there that provides access to that CR rather than to try to amend that CR because it's with the state and it's a very long process to amend it. So the condition would be to include that language and to have town council review it.
Okay, I mean, the important thing is that we get easement access over the existing parcel, so the trail from where Hill to the town land, Osgood land, it continues through the, all of the property of Edgewood. As, as long as you get that in there, I'm fine.
Okay, so on the CR that's being proposed and drafted, that public access language is within the CR for the new parcel that is.
Yeah, right.
It just wasn't in the other one, so in order to get it to there, we're, we're putting it in that easement.
Okay.
And we'll make sure that, that's all covered.
Yeah, okay.
And there's one more thing I wanted to make sure the board understood for the connection to the relocated trails, if you bring up the mine map overhead. So we've discussed, it's going to, right now, that trail is actually where the building footprint is. This project proposes to relocate it a little bit further up Half Mile Hill and.
Far up?
It's, it's a very estimate, but if you can, you, you know where the building location's going to be, you can kind of see the faint trail that exists already and that's the trail that's being relocated. The, so that yellow line is the property line and the project will bring a trail right to that line, but you can see where that red arrow is, there's still some wooded area on the Half Mile Hill side before the trail.
Is there?
So on the screen is kind of an aerial view of that.
Yes, this is our, our property line and then this is the town.
And you're saying that dash line is the extent of the, where the trees are, or is that where the path is intended to go?
That's the existing trail.
Yeah, and then this is an estimate from that, that area of where the existing trail is, so we're bringing the relocated trail, which came through here around the site to, to our property line, which is the stone wall, and there'll be a break in the stone wall.
The issue is that there has to be some very small amount of tree there, but it's not on their property, it's our property.
So the town owns it, Conservation Commission is under care custody and control, so all that's in the finding of facts that the town would have to, Edgewood's willing to do that work, but the town at some point would have to let Edgewood do that work on our property.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, I think if we overlook that, I'll.
Yes. I just wanted to make sure everybody's clear, they're providing trail access, but there is still some work to be done.
No, I, I, I do understand. I, I remember the trail in reality was over property that we had no rights to travel over.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, because it was owned by a private party.
Absolutely, yeah.
I mean, yeah.
And, and as we discovered, the Edgewood parcel, it was kind of the same situation because we didn't have that.
Right, which is practically speak, I mean, I, subtly different, but yeah, I mean, in the end, the same thing, so, yeah, okay.
Okay, and so the only other item here, and again, when we get to the decision, it's in the finding of facts, so the access parking to Half Mile Hill today is at the end of that green line we just looked at for the easement, so it's actually, there was some three dedicated spaces that now are the access way to this new property.
Yeah.
They also propose to be relocated to the Edgewood property, so the first three there and there's two existing on the other side of the entry. And what we're going to do is use that, well, I'm sorry, likely be a license agreement with Edgewood to condition those decisions under a license.
Okay.
Those spaces under a license agreement. When I left today, I talked to town council, will possibly including them in the easement, so we will do one or the other, whatever council recommends, but those five spaces, we need some protection over those.
And that's part of the conditions?
Right, that's what we're going to put in the condition.
Yeah.
And if it does end up as a license arrangement, does that extend in perpetuity?
See, that's why easements are better than licenses.
Just, okay, we need to discuss that.
Town council.
Right, town council, so Paul Headstrom's recommending a license agreement. What I suggested before I left tonight was to do it under the easement, we need further discussion, so. But either way, it should be conditioned and we should have that in the decision and it's not in there today, so tonight we have to add that. So, yeah, we talked about conservation, so they'll have some input and it's, it's been discussed in the office several times now, whether the applicants will go to conservation or maybe an Eric Afori goes, but in the end, I trust somebody's going to go to conservation to make sure that work gets done to connect that trail.
Sure.
Unless you have any other questions, we have closed the stormwater review, we closed the civil review, DPW signed off, fire has signed off, and any other department that had commented has been resolved.
I have a question on the watershed special permit aspect. On your sprinkler and your fire, are you having outside stand pipes that are going to need to be flushed? Do you have outside stand pipes because they eventually need to be flushed if you do?
Yes, I believe, yes, I believe at the entrance, we're, we have our, our fire department connection.
Okay, they're on the front, are there any on the back because I know there was some sort of egress issue for the fire department or on the backside of the prop?
No, the only connection will be right here to the left of the entranceway.
And what about where's the fire hydrant?
Fire hydrant is right, right here.
They don't pull it up, approximately that, okay, yeah.
So we have our, our fire, fire department connection right next to our entrance and then our hydrant.
And then where is your sprinkler room connection?
Our sprinkler room, I believe, is, is also right, right there.
Only thing I'd like to do is have them throw something in the O and M plan, there's that, especially the fire hydrant, is the fire department just usually opens them wide is to put in there that they have to properly channel it into a detention pond or something, not flush it down to the, you know, lake and.
I think it'll flow the other way, but.
It should, but it's, yeah, I don't know, I don't know where it's graded to, but just, we should probably do that as a process for the, when anything, the watershed for.
Yeah.
Just throw it in there, something in there, because the fire department wouldn't know and the sprinkler company wouldn't know.
Okay, so we're all good?
I don't have any more.
So I think we ought to probably close each one separately. If somebody could first close the site plan review modification hearing.
Will we close the site plan?
Site plan review modification.
Yeah, I'm looking for where we are.
Okay.
4575 Osgood.
Yeah.
Will be closed, the notice of decision, site plan review modification for pasture LLC.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to the modification of the CCRC special permit.
I'll make a motion.
Just, just, just point a question, if, if there, if we picked up something here, it might apply to the other ones.
Well, of course, that's, she drafted them so that they were graded.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you, you want to close them all at once?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're going to vote all three of them, yeah.
I'll make a motion to close the continuing care retirement center special permit for pond pasture 575 Osgood Street.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And then the last one is.
I'll make a motion to close the watershed protection district special permit for 575 Osgood Street pond pasture LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Jean, which order should we go through to read them?
I would recommend the watershed first because it's kind of independent of the others, then site plan and CCRC.
Okay.
The site plan, we consider kind of the master and make sure everything's in there. The CCRC has some redundancy, but it's only, we wanted to make sure it was definitely covered in the site plan.
Yeah, having a little bit of a rock is fine, yeah, okay. Okay, so let's do the watershed special permit of ours. What does it mean if we're with like satisfactory trust with the exception of items deferred to the plan?
I only deferred one in terms of that stop, that painted stop sign and stop line, so there was one comment that wasn't resolved in their review. We can edit that now to say they've all been resolved?
It just feels like they were, it, it, it leaves the impression that there's something hanging out there, but I think in the end, everything was satisfactory.
As of tonight, it's not hanging out there anymore, so we can update that.
I do think you might want to say here, at least in one of the decisions, I don't know which one it is, this might be the appropriate one, is that the remainder of the property is going to remain open, so it's actually an aspect of preservation in the watershed.
What is the mechanism to sort of, you know, on number twenty-one? Is there any type of after-the-fact process to assess the compliance with that?
Not that I know of. You have a suggestion?
No, we do that a lot.
We do put it on the deed, but we don't. Do you have a suggestion how we could follow up?
It's more of a question at this point, you know. I think it's appropriate that we have it there, I just don't know what, you know, what is appropriate to follow up?
Wouldn't we know by what goes in the bottom?
I don't know.
No?
Can I source it?
Then how would we do it? We'd have to have someone go out there and measure it?
I don't know, it's just literally a question.
Mr. Rowan always said, you know, we shouldn't put anything in the rules.
That we can't. I mean, it is a, I mean, it's the same problem we have with any one of our special permits. I mean, I think that the fact that there's a deed restriction gives you some level of thinking this is potentially enforceable by somebody else. And frankly, when you're in an institutional environment, you actually, if you think about it, there's more sort of control if you have, because people would be out there on different occasions, so.
But it's not like every O and M plan has all kinds of requirements for maintenance of the stormwater structures.
Correct, that's what I'm.
And in some cases, we do get an annual report, like the Butch Boy Plaza, we get an annual report. But there's a tremendous amount of development where there are O and M plans, and they're responsible. And it goes with the site, and that's our enforcement, but.
Well, I just.
I mean, I do think in this one, we have a better likelihood of doing this, but I think that we ought to continue to talk about this topic, because I think it's, how do you get what you want without being handed about it? And that's that balance.
One of the things I recently saw, which is why it made me think to ask it, is one pound of phosphorus correlates to 500 pounds of algae. I mean, it's not direct in every case, but that's kind of the ratio. In other words, it's a significant, it's not a de minimis potential impact.
Yeah.
And so having just seen that, but.
Yeah.
We talked once about having the landscapers participate.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Anyway, I don't want to hold this up.
So.
I think what you're saying, though, is telling them why is also the best way to get rulings.
Absolutely.
So I was telling them, you got to, there's a reason for it.
Here's the reason, yeah.
And here's the reasons.
And that's on the next mailer, and we do intend to send that to local landscapers as well, with a cover memo of where it applies, so.
Just quickly on thirteen, one of the variants, one, it should include any appeal period, so.
Okay, I thought of that, I forgot to add it.
Jean, which of the decisions has the easement stuff we just talked about?
I think both site plan and CCRC, but we definitely have it.
Okay, so it's the other two?
I just didn't think it was applicable to the watershed.
That's fine, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure we.
Yep, I think it's in, I think it's in both, but.
Okay, okay. Is everybody?
I'm running my work today.
Okay, good for you. We've got a special star.
I do, don't I?
Yes. Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the watershed protection special permit? As amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the watershed special protection district special. Did we change the warning to watershed special permit? Yeah, we add protection district to the title of this one. Okay, but five seventy-five Osgood Street, Pond pasture, as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good. On to the site plan. Same thing in number eleven, the exception.
Yep.
Number twelve, the, is confirmed that the lot frontage is legal and nonconforming. What does that mean?
So tech raised the concern that it didn't have frontage. Again, these are all going to be combined, throw an A and R into one lot anyways, but the.
So.
No, the easement provided sixty feet of frontage. We have correspondence that are planned from nineteen fifty-nine. It shows the easement onto Osgood Street and provided legal frontage of sixty feet, so.
Because that's the set of the eas, the old easement?
Yep. So it was, the ZVA requested it as well, and so that letter was provided to the ZVA in their application, too.
Okay. I don't know, I just, it doesn't, I don't think there's any harm in keeping it, it just feels kind of awkward to me.
Yeah, we can remove it if you'd like, it's just.
Well, the current, don't forget, the current property isn't combined yet, so it doesn't have the frontage yet. Until they combine it.
Right.
So that's why they brought it up.
But this parcel alone does not meet a lot of the dimensional requirements. Because it needs to be twenty-five acres, and it's only twenty. But once they're combined, it meets all the dimensional requirements of the CCRC.
Well, maybe what you need to add is that when it gets combined, it's fine. Maybe that's the clarification, indeed.
I guess somewhere, right?
I think that's a good idea, because ten years from now.
Yeah.
On number seventeen, you're, I think, missing a closing parenthesis. Maybe after the word property.
Yep.
And that's what we just talked about, so in eighteen, we're saying that should be approved.
Finding of facts. So this is just a finding of fact, that she wrote a letter to the board saying they should approve that.
Okay.
And it's been discussed as to whether the applicant goes before them or the town goes before them. I don't have a condition saying they shall approve it.
Right.
It's just the fact of the matter is, if you want the connection, somebody has to do some work on town land to do that.
It's, twenty-one is a statement of fact, right? But the, is there another condition in there that deals with getting that easement?
Yes.
Okay.
Number thirty-eight then conditions that. So in finding of fact, number twenty-two, again, this comes into play with, once the lots are combined, they meet the forty required spaces. Right now, because of kind of the change in the access and dedicating those three spaces, they actually are providing, if I remember right, thirty-eight spaces with forties required. But once you combine the lots, they exceed the required in total.
What's the timing on the A and R to?
It's within thirty days, I think we conditioned. So thirty days, we should probably add from the appeal period as well.
The, Jean, twenty-three, it talks about seventy-five percent open space, and then fifteen point three acres, and then it says the combined is eighty-five of the site. The site is the broader site?
Yes. Actually, no, that's a good point. So the site in the definition is this twenty acre parcel.
Okay, so is it seventy-five or eighty-five? Why is the combination of it make it more? I thought, we've said in the beginning, only three and a half acres are going to be disturbed.
Right.
It's possible the difference is that some of that, the extra ten percent, which would be two acres, is going to be open, but it's not going to be part of the conservation restriction? Is the conservation restriction going to be fifteen acres or seventeen acres?
Fifteen point three. That's once they combine it with the eighty-nine acre parcel for Edgewood. That's the resulting open space, the combined total.
But the, you have a conservation restriction of fifteen point three acres, but we said that only three and a half acres are going to be disturbed.
Right.
So it's possible that the rest of it's just going to be open, but not disturbed. But what I'm trying to get at is that eighty-five point three one, is that eighty-five point three? Again, back.
Eighty-five point three one is the combined parcels, meaning the seventy point four eight acres and the sixteen point five acres of common open space on the pond pasture.
Now, I'm confused, because it says fifteen point three versus sixteen point four eight, so which? I just think you have to get the numbers tied down right.
Okay.
Yeah.
This matrix, I asked for the matrix of the combined to write this, and this one has sixteen point five. But you're right, it's fifteen point three elsewhere, so I'll.
And if you're doing the combined, you ought to just label it as the combined.
It shouldn't be site anymore, yep.
So are we going to have them build out all the parking space day one?
Yes.
Okay.
They do feel it's necessary. They, there could be some employee overflow over there or whatnot, but this area does tend to get fairly congested with parking. Other areas may have some openness, but where they're proposing the ten spaces on Edgewood's property is grass today, and it's often that people are actually parking there. So they definitely need more on that side of it. And the thirty-eight may come down to management of, maybe employees will be directed over there if it's not reused, to provide better access to people visiting.
So what's the point of thirty-one, if they're building out the full amount now?
TUC's comment was that they would probably need more parking.
Yeah.
And so they wanted them to.
Again, TUC did site visits, and they saw that parking on the grass, and they just feel that Edgewood may be coming back later to add more.
Okay, that's fine.
Just curious on thirty-seven, on the thirty days for A and R, have I given them enough time?
I said we'll add the twenty-day appeal period to that, too.
But even, but is thirty enough, just in case they're holidays?
It's the same one, the original, the original permit for site plan and required in A and R as well, and that was the timetable, so I left it.
And in thirty-four, is the language that we have there adequately referring to the piece of property that we're talking about? John, you were just talking about, you know, the different parcels, and in thirty-four, it's, you know, the property, the common open space. Are we clear on, in thirty-four, which?
Well, if common open space. So how do we ensure that exactly what we want to be designated is, ends up being designated as part of the conservation restriction? Is it the, is it listed on the plans?
It's listed, yeah, as, on the current plan, it's identified as lot B, if I remember right, not a buildable lot. So that's how it's shown, which part is going to be the conservation restriction.
Okay, it might be just a good idea, again, if it's fifteen acres or sixteen point three or whatever, to designate it by that designation, so it's a reference back to the plan.
Okay, so Peter, I'm confused. Number thirty-four is the planting plan shall include all native species, so where am I missing?
I have a different thirty-four.
Again, Rebecca pointed out, I have an older one, so I copied some of them. Okay, so you have it, right?
It's the conservation restriction.
Yeah, I added that late today into this one, so number thirty-four.
So thirty-nine is the one that we talked about, that that will give us access over the existing property?
Yes.
Can we, like, expand that to make it clear that it's supposed to include that?
Yes.
And is there going to be an easement? Where are the easement rights going to be recorded on the open space piece, the new open space? Because you've got the conservation restriction.
Right.
But the easement access through the conservation restriction for the new property, where is that going to be asked for? I should say, is, I just haven't seen that show up as a condition.
Right, so the eas, this relocated?
I'm not worried, no, no, where, in other words, continuing along, well, wherever the path is going to be, including the piece that goes along the order front, where is, in other words, where are we asking for that? How will we get that recorded? How will we know what it is to be able to record it?
It's in the CR, and the access to it is on that main easement all the way up to the property.
So you're saying the CR is going to include where we have easement rights?
It's going to include a public access clause that says, public has rights to access that property, all the trails, to use them for recreational conservation.
But let's just make sure it includes the continuation of the path along the lake.
All paths on that property.
Okay, all paths on the property, okay.
I'll confirm it all with council, but.
Okay, good, okay, no, that's fine, because I see what you're doing, you're putting in the conservation restriction as opposed to a separate easement.
Yeah, yep, and the, and the access to that property is on that main, that's staying in place, the driveway up to it.
I think the only issue I have with the thirty-nine is the fact that you used the word drafts. Like, shouldn't it be that it's submitted and approved by the selection?
Well, this is just prior, yeah, so later I say it has to be recorded. So this is.
I'm like, why are we only asking for drafts, that's all.
Just before I endorse the plans, I want to make sure we at least have those in hands, and we already do have them in hands.
Okay. Oh, I see it, never mind. Anyway, so.
Yeah, forty-four, yeah.
And the CR will take a longer period of time than the easement document, and so that can be recorded. Board of Selectmen approved that prior to the CR, so I left the CR just in a general condition, because I'm not quite sure when that will finally be recorded.
None of this is land court, is it?
It wasn't last time, so.
I shouldn't say none, I can certainly tell you that the, the Pond pasture parcel is not registered land. I can check and confirm the other Edgewood parcel, I don't believe that they are, and I know that the easement itself, the original easement, which was the lane to Pond pasture, was not part of registered land. Yeah.
And so, if it was registered land, I just would want to let them stop construction, because it could take a while, but-
So when you get to the bond amounts, I put 10,000 in the watershed and 10 in this and nothing in the CRC, CCRC.
What is wavefinding signage?
Well, that was important to the fire department, so we had a lot of dialogue about when the fire department call comes in, it's by the radio box, we'll identify what building it is, but they want to make sure, once they get them, there's all different signs for the meadows versus the cottages, and so they'll be, this building will be named something, and those signs will be updated to have directional arrows.
Is that their terminology, wavefinding?
Pretty common, really.
Really?
Wavefinding?
Never heard of it.
It's kind of a cool term, but I've never heard it.
It's a noise, that's what it was, we never heard of it.
Yeah, wavefinding, it's pretty literal.
Senator Underwood term. Pete, I don't know, have you heard of it before?
I have, yeah.
Oh, you have, okay. So, hey, why not, let's keep it in there.
The fire truck apparatus, they want directional signing to get to that building name, so.
Okay, is everybody good? So, would somebody like to make a motion on the site plan review modification?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan review modification as amended of Pond pasture LLC 575 Osgood Street.
Okay. Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And here's where you'll see some of that redundancy, but I just wanted to make sure it captures it.
Sorry, you told Rebecca, but in paragraph five, I think we should take off the word stock at the end of the paragraph. I just think housing is enough, I don't know what stock is, but.
And in finding effect 10, let's just confirm that the 15.3 is the right number.
I'll do that on both.
And 12, the same comment as the last one, whatever you changed in the other decision, you can change here.
Go back to number 11, the exception of items.
You got to fix the closing parenthesis on 17.
Consistent, huh?
Yeah. So you're going to, where it's redundant, let's, if we make changes in the other one, make the same changes here, I think that's, yeah.
I will.
And the clarification in five, under special conditions, making sure we got the right piece on there.
Change your numbering nomenclature in this one. The word not cooperate?
It did not.
No matter how many times you kick it, sometimes it doesn't renumber the way you want it to. Is there anything in this one that is unique in the special conditions? That you've specifically put in this one, you didn't put in the other one?
No, not that I remember, but I'll leave it there.
That's one, I guess, a clarification, the issue was raised about the timing of the 30 days for the A&amp;R. One point that I think we might need to clarify is that it would be 30 days from the later to occur of the issuance of this decision or the ZVA.
Including the law.
Yeah, yeah, following it.
The latter of the two, yep.
We all good? So on the CCRC, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the continuing care retirement center special permit modification for Pond pasture LLC 575 Osgood Street as amended.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor? There you go. The phone begins.
Thank you very much. In a public declaration, superb job by the board.
Don't tell us that, say we were awful.
We're still being recorded.
Yeah, we're still being recorded. Say we were really tough. We liked the new council better than the old council. Okay, this is good, where else we got, Jeanie?
Thank you.
Minutes? Good night, thank you.
Minutes?
Minutes.
Goes out of the way.
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good. It went down to three pages.
Motion to approve the minutes of what night?
I'll make a motion to approve the October 18, 2016 meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Other than that, late cleanup day is Saturday at 8 o'clock. The meeting place is the Stevie's Pond parking area, the reason Wire Hill. If anybody's interested, that's where we meet, and we'll have all the supplies there.
Maybe I'll bring my own trash bags, Peter, if you can't, since you can't confirm the size of the trash bag.
I call it Wire Hill, you called it Weir.
It's named after fishware.
It's spelled Weir, but it's pronounced Wire.
Okay, that's the word. You got to learn.
Something else?
All right, motion adjourned.
Are you going to come clean?
I, I may take the matter under advisement, all in favor?
Aye.